Hello, hello, Lisa, testing. Can you hear us? Anyone out there? If I know Lisa, she's probably making that last cup of coffee. Or tea. Are you waiting for the second to take off? All right, we're here. It's five o'clock, so welcome everyone to the first meeting Town of Kipsey Planning Board, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please start by joining me for the pledge.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. Just a note on the agenda, the New York State Distribution Services and the Spark Car Wash have both asked to be removed due to the agenda to work on additional items. But we will go forward with a couple of hearings since they were advertised. Just a note on the Distribution Services, the town was able to find an odor consultant for us with a lot of experience in industrial and cannabis odor control. So we hired him to look over the application and he will, and he has requested more information from the applicant, which is probably one of the reasons they asked to be adjourned this time. With that in mind, I'll move we open the public hearing for it.
Second.
Moves in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Quorum tonight. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on New York Distribution Services tonight? Or anyone on Zoom? You can unmute yourself or just start talking. Looks like we're good. Seeing none, I move we adjourn the public hearing to February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Moves in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Next application is the Spark Car Wash, who also asked to be removed tonight, but has an advertised hearing. I move we open the hearing.
Second.
Moves in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on the Spark Car Wash application or on the Zoom? And if you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand or just unmute yourself. Seeing none, I move we adjourn the public hearing to February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Moves in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Third application, Best Buzz on Taft Avenue. Welcome back, guys.
Aye.
Meeting, everybody. Afternoon. Frank?
Hi. Frank Riddle, project manager for Video Treats, property owner.
Amy Bonner, the applicant's engineer from Dade and Stagosa.
We're here for a continued public hearing. Since our last appearance before you, we've knocked off a lot of, the majority of the comments that the town has made. We have some few outstanding items. The DOT has requested a crash diagram. We've requested colliers to prepare that. We have to show a traffic pattern for a refuse truck, some small items like that, but I think we're in pretty good shape so far.
Yep. And, all right, let me go to Kristen.
Yeah, great. My comments are fairly minor at this point. It is on for a public hearing, secret review for type-two action. The applicant did actually receive their official license from New York State as well over the past week or within the past week. So the town has been able to retain a copy of that, just for the project record. Again, fairly minor comments remain. As far as the planning department goes, we did ask the town's traffic engineer to take a look at the submission. And based on a conversation with him, the comments that are outstanding and comments even at the DOT level would be able to be reviewed, addressed, hopefully, and reviewed by our town traffic engineer and also we would send them over to DOT just for due diligence. They don't really have, you know, we wanted to make sure everyone had an opportunity to weigh in on the project if they had concerns in terms of traffic maneuvers. And then I think there was just some coordination potentially with the town police department that might have been outstanding, but I can help facilitate that conversation further if needed. But staff is recommending that the board, if comfortable, you could open the public hearing this evening here, comment. Based on comment, you can either adjourn the public hearing to a future meeting or close it. There is a resolution to adopt a secret determination just for type-two action and also a resolution to grant conditional amended site plan approval. As far as just a reminder for the architecture, this property was before this planning board about a year ago or so for architectural review. So in essence, you're reapproving what's already been approved. I just wanted to remind you.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if there are any changes proposed from that.
Yeah, with that in mind, along with Kristen's thinking, there are a few outstanding items. I'm comfortable that we can work with staff to finish those things up. So we would ask if you would consider conditional final this evening.
All right, we'll see what the board's purview is. Amy?
We don't really have anything significant to add right now.
Okay. In that case, I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moves in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anyone wish to comment on Best Buzz tonight? The audience here? Or anyone on Zoom? You can just unmute yourself and talk or wave your hands. Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moves in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. We never got, did we want Mark? Mark is on. I don't know if we wanted to ask him to, if he had any, anything else to add.
Sorry, Mark, forgot you looked.
No.
Yep. Any last comments on the traffic?
Nothing too substantial. They did do a traffic analysis. They counted the whole intersection for basically the majority of the day. And there was one level service degradation at the opposing city diner driveway. But it's an unsignaled intersection. It's very limited as far as what can be done as far as mitigations for that. But still, it operates at a level of service C, which is still good conditions. Obviously, you got levels of service A through F letter grades essentially. So a C is relatively good still. And there is some temporary blockage from the adjacent signals as mentioned in the study, but it does clear out once it's given the green on Taft. There is some mitigations that they're showing and recommendations they're proposing to improve the site distance and enhance it at the existing driveway. And then there were some clarification items that we had regarding to this site plans, but again, pretty minor items, so.
Okay, thanks. Just a quick question, as far as traffic volumes for this type of business versus the former video rental store, do you think it's comparable or less?
So it's a little, it's a little bit more. Looking at their traffic study, they have forty-one peak hour trips in the AM hour and sixty-one in the PM hour. If you just look at a general retail aspect, it might be roughly about half of that. But it was noted in the applicant's study that the hours of operation, well, actually, it was noted in the letter, that the hours of operation are from nine AM to eleven PM. However, the peak hour of the study that was analyzed was from eight to nine. So actually, they conservatively, conservatively applied those AM hours on top of those hours that technically they would not be operating on in that aspect. And that actually is the same hour that that level of service degradation occurs.
Did they take any credit for walk-ins?
There is no credits. It's just straight, you know, you could be expecting, because there is some walkability aspect in the area with sidewalks adjacent, but there is no credits for the adjacent sidewalks or anything.
Okay. Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
All right, go around the board for comments. Peter?
Not really. I just, well, I had a couple, but I think I know the answers to those. But the last time you were here, did we talk about security cameras?
Yes, we did. There's gonna be security inside and outside the store, yes.
Are you guys gonna have a security guard?
Yes, yes. When you first work into the store, you'll meet a security guard. At that time, ID is reviewed. Then you go in, pick out your product. When you go to buy the product, it's ID checked again, and there's another security guard at that location.
Okay, great.
And I think they want to work with the, they still haven't announced anything to work with the police.
Right, right. But ultimately, from a mom's standpoint, I know that kids can get big IDs and stuff like that. So for there to be a security guard there, checking IDs, making sure the person is twenty-one and older.
Yeah. Actually, they have, they have machines too, where you can scan the back of your license to see if it's a fraudulent license or copied or if it's valid.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It's harder to copy them these days than it used to be when they were paper with no picture. Anything, Sharon?
No, I'm good.
Nothing.
All right. Still calling yourself Video Treats, you're not selling, you're not gonna rent any tapes now, I guess. Nope, not anymore. Okay. So I think I have nothing else further than what we've discussed either.
Okay. I move the planning board hereby determine that Best Buzz Taft Avenue is a type-two action per part six-one-seven dot five C eighteen, requiring no further environmental review.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move to the second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for Best Buzz Taft Avenue, subject to the following. Respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies in said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to, the following, one through nine.
Seconded.
Move to the seconded for conditional, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And do you have anything?
Do we have to do architectural review?
Yeah, I was saying, do we have to reapprove the architectural review?
We have to ask, are you making any architectural changes from what we approved?
No, everything's the same as what you approved last year. Okay, anybody have any concerns with that? I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moves in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Next up is Inwood Avenue Town Homes. Yeah, I'm not sure that anyone is here right now for them. And he was probably planning to come in person.
He didn't say.
He didn't say.
I assumed they were gonna be remote, but I didn't ask.
Okay. So do we want to?
Skip over?
Want to do the other adjournments and then maybe we'll skip over to the Vassar project if necessary. Yeah, we have a wait on Inwood for a few minutes and skip to some adjournments. Eight Tucker Drive. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Moves in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Casper Kill South Road Development. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Moves in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Dutchess Maxi Store Two. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Moves in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Habitat for Humanity on Sunset Avenue, Sunset Avenue. I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Moves in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And Manor Hill Community Project, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Moves in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Moves are adjourned, pass. Is there anyone has arrived on Zoom or Inwood yet? It does not appear so, no? Seeing none, we table it, move on. This time I move we allow comments on any other items on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Moves in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anyone wish to comment on remaining agenda items tonight? Seeing none, I move we continue the meeting.
Second.
Moves in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up is Vassar College Library Vestibule. Who's presenting for Vassar tonight?
I'm presenting, Dan Wood, although it looks like I'm a maladroitism, Dan Wood, but I can't change my name in the Zoom.
That's fine. It shows up in there.
Yeah. Shall I just share my screen?
Yes, please. Go ahead and show what you're planning to do.
Do you see a red slide?
Yes, we do. Yeah.
Okay, fantastic. Great. Well, thank you, everyone. My name is Dan Wood. I'm an architect in New York. And we're presenting a small but significant addition to the library at Vassar College. Just to locate it, Vassar Library is on the middle left of your screen. There, and it's composed of many different buildings from different periods of time called Lockwood, Ingram, and Thompson. Thompson being the main historic library. It's near Chicago Hall. And this is probably a better view of it. The main building is straight ahead with the main quad, and the library is here on the left. We are specifically talking about the Ingram and Lockwood additions. Lockwood is an addition from the late nineteen fifties and Ingram from the nineteen nineties, which combined to create the kind of north end of the library. And we are looking at the north entry, which is on the north side of that. This just shows in three dimensions how traffic is entering. The vehicular entrances are by Chicago Hall and along Main Drive off of Raymond Avenue, with most traffic coming in from the main drive. I do want to note that, two things. One is that this entrance, the north entrance, has been the handicapped entrance for the library since the nineteen nineties. So this is not a change in terms of accessibility. It's an acknowledgement that the entrance is underwhelming and a bit of a secondary entrance. And this project is a renovation of the library and this addition in order to create much more of a welcoming and significant entrance to the library for students and for other members of the public. So that it's, the accessible entrance is not necessarily relegated to the back or to a secondary entrance, but it's really a significant entrance to the library. That's the purpose of the project. There was a question about handicapped parking spots. The closest ones are outside of Chicago Hall. There are five handicapped accessible spots as shown at the top of the screen. It's about three hundred feet from the north entrance. But the second thing I want to point out is that the primary users of the library in this entrance are students and faculty who are coming, not in a car, but from other parts of the campus. So, and as I said, you know, this has been the handicap, the accessible entrance for a long time. There are also spots along Main Campus Drive, or spots. And then at the main building, there's a couple as well. But the closest ones are there outside of Chicago Hall. This is the elevation of the existing condition. On the left, you see the Hardy-Holzman-Pfeiffer addition from nineteen nineties. And on the right, the HOK addition from the late nineteen fifties. And the entrance is right in the middle. Due to the grade levels, the entrance ceiling is only about seven feet. It's a double, it opens up to double height, but it's quite cramped in there. So again, security and visibility are important and improving accessibility are the goals. This is a photograph of the two buildings. And this is a view of the interior vestibule. There is not a lot of space in there. It is difficult to turn a wheelchair coming in the door from the left at the left-hand image. And, you know, generally, it could use a bit of a refresh. This is the site plan. We are not changing the lighting or landscaping in order to accommodate this addition. It basically takes the position of the awning that exists right now. And it is ten feet by fifteen foot nine, so about a hundred, a little less than a hundred and sixty feet, square feet. On the left is the roof plan, so we will have drainage, and we are working on the drainage details. I know that was also requested. We should have those in a week or so. And the middle drawing shows the vestibule, again, to maximize height, it's primarily a double-height space with a small kind of bench that will also let a little bit of natural light into the stairway area. And then at the ground floor, you can see we've opened it up. We've moved the door line more than a foot out into the vestibule, and those will be automatic sliding doors, so should be much more accessible and lots of room to maneuver. We're also redoing the stair. Well, we're redoing this whole area of the library, the interior, but that's not under this planning application obviously. And this is what it looks like in elevation. So we've taken, you know, cues from the two buildings, which are very different, but, you know, we found a few things that are similar, some lines that line up, and we wanted our addition to not only kind of announce this new presence and be inviting, but also, you know, not to look completely out of place in these two modernist additions. What we're proposing is a perforated metal screen around a glass box. The perforated metal will allow, will kind of glow at night. It's painted a red color, which refers back not only to kind of Vassar red, which is the kind of logo color of Vassar, but also the brick of the nineteen nineties addition behind it. And at the same time, it's got a kind of angled shape to it, which, you know, kind of refers back to the brutalist, the angles in the windows of the brutalist addition. So we're kind of taking cues from both sides. I did want to show, this is another one of our projects for the Rhode Island School of Design, where we similarly used this perforated metal. So it gives a really nice texture when it's opaque, and it kind of reads pretty nicely with the brick. You get a kind of similar textured pattern, obviously very different material. And then over windows, you can see how it's basically transparent from the inside, and at night it will really glow like this. So these two windows on the right are behind this perforated metal. And here you see it, so you see the kind of glass and the transparency behind. The glass is really facing the campus side. And then on this kind of nook on the west side, we have a black wall, which will conceal the structure and the roof drains. And then all glass at the bottom. These are the elevations. And some details, which I think your engineering team has reviewed. Here you see those angled elements that I was describing that kind of pick up on the angles of the brutalist building. And then some details for the drainage, and again, we'll make sure to address all the engineering concerns. The foundation, I think there's a question about the foundation depth. It's about four feet. And the details of the rain screen, and again, the elevation.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like a nice addition.
One of our small buildings, but it's very important.
Sure. Yeah, our planning department comments were just for signature blocks and a project title on the plans. And otherwise architectural review for the board. I understand it is part of a larger interior renovation of the library. Is that right?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Thanks. And I think, I think the engineering department had some comments, and I, oh, that's right, the county was a local concern.
All right, thanks. Andy?
Yeah, sure, as you alluded, we're just curious about the discharge location of the downspouts, to make sure that's not discharged onto a, you know, a walkway or anything like that. We'd like to see it go into the grass area or landscaped area.
Yeah, you don't want icing.
Right. We had some, yeah, especially today, right? We had some questions about the lighting, if anything, on the exterior. Lighting was gonna be changing. It sounds like the answer is no.
Correct. No changes to the interior.
And then we just were kind of looking, because there will be some, you know, excavation required for the foundation, we're just looking for some, you know, basic erosion sound control details, plans.
And a clean out, thank you for mentioning.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get those too.
All right. Fairly small in nature. That sounds good. Thanks, Heidi. Let's go around the board for comments. Anyone have any comments on it?
Looks good.
No, no comments.
Nope.
Nope.
It's an improvement. It's like an improvement.
Yep, that will help, as you say, it'll help keep people out of the weather as well, entering the building.
I move the planning board grant conditional architectural approval and direct applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following 1 through 4.
Second.
Moved in seconded for conditional. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 5 to 0. You're good to go, Dan. Good luck with the project.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. I believe Greg is in the hall. We've got someone here. Yeah, might as well. I have a couple of time extensions, so I move the planning board grant 190-day time extension of conditional special use permit and site plan approval from February 14th, 2025 forward to May 15th, 2025, for the Hudson Valley Animal Rescue and Sanctuary.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, Lands of Albano subdivision, Peach Road. I move the planning board grant 190-day time extension of conditional minor subdivision approval from February 11th, 2025 forward to May 12th, 2025.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Last application, Inwood Avenue Town Homes. Come on. Welcome back.
That's it. Glad to be back.
Made some changes and updates?
Yeah. If you want, I can fire up the computer real quick and go through some of the changes, the questions. But since our last presentation to the board, we've been working with the town's consultants and planning department to fine-tune some site issues and provide more information, which I think, I think we've done a pretty good job of doing. Some of those relate to wetlands. And in particular, we were able to realign the roads slightly to really minimize the wetland disturbance. And some of those things were re-alignment of the road. We also increased buffering by limiting some patios and making them decks sort of above the ground and minimizing ground disturbance and avoiding disturbance to rear some of the properties which are close to the wetlands. In moving those roads, we also increased some of the buffering between the wetlands and any disturbed areas. And we are providing an area that currently is not a wetland, but is really kind of really scrubby and of no real great value. So, during the process, we're going to clear that out. We're going to put in a structure there to kind of pool water up whenever it rains, and we're going to seed it and plant it for wetlands, so it'll turn into a wetland. And I think it'll be a much nicer improvement and definitely more and compensate for any disturbance that we are doing. With some of the drainage, we're providing an extra bioretention basin, some access improvements to, for maintenance purposes. And some more information, just more detailed information that your consultants wanted to make sure that we were on the right track, and we're going to be able to do what we needed to do to meet these requirements. And those are the main things that changed. And honestly, you probably wouldn't really pick it up if you're looking at the overall plan, because they weren't major, major.
Yeah, they were subtle, but yeah. For anyone listening, I'm sorry, we had a few of us that go out in a field visit there, and with Carol, our well and consultant, and she helped to guide where to make those small changes and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, the field visit was a huge help. And that was great that the town was able to, you know, get your consultants, planners, and stuff there, and some of the board members came, and really helped us kind of massage and tweak the plan to a point that I think better aligns with everybody's goals.
Yep. All right. Thanks for the update. Eric?
Not too much more to add. Staff believes it's ready for a SEAKER determination. My understanding is that the remaining SEAKER-related comments have been drainage and such were addressed. The town engineer can discuss those. The remaining comments from planning and other departments appear amenable to preliminary site plan review after the town board considers the rezoning and the zoning board considers potential variance. With respect to that last item, the applicant, it's not necessary for SEAKER, but in the head of the zoning board review of the residential buffer setback, the board might want to discuss, it might be appropriate for the board to consider whether the residential setback of 100 feet, particularly with relation to the Inwood Avenue frontage, how you would like to address that before the zoning board takes it up.
Yep. All right. Thanks, Eric.
And you have resolutions for negative declaration and for a recommendation to the town board in your drafts.
Andy, are you getting more satisfied?
Yeah. So, as Greg said, we worked with his team, and we kind of walked through some of our outstanding concerns. And they've addressed those issues, especially with regard to stormwater. Like you said, he added another bioretention filter. We had some questions about some of the other disconnected rooftops and grading associated with that. So, they have addressed those concerns that we've had. We talked about the drainage coming under Inwood. He provided some calculations that showed that the stream, the capacity of the pipe, based on the capacity of the pipe going on in Inwood Avenue, and that the stream will remain outside the developed area, so it shouldn't have any effect on that. And that the berm or dams, I don't want to call it a dam, it's so small, but the structure they're constructing to build, to create the wetland area, has more than enough capacity to handle that flow rate and shouldn't cause any problems with development. So, that and, you know, they've agreed to, based on the size of the pond in the back, although it doesn't quite meet the standard of a dam requiring a permit, they've agreed to construct it that way. So, I think that's a plus.
No, it was a concern of yours.
Yeah. So, with that said, I'm comfortable that they're ready to move forward with SEAKER at this point.
How about from the, I know they provided a kind of skeleton of a geotech report, but not...
Yeah, I took a look at the geotech report. It's, you know, it's very basic, but and the report indicates that they believe that the rock is ripable, which means they don't need to blast. It might be a good idea to include some notes on the plan about blasting, just in case that is, becomes necessary. But I think, given if that's addressed, I think we're okay to move ahead.
Okay, yeah. If they need to do that, there's more hoops to jump through to do that blasting plan, but that's, as long as there's a note on the plan for that.
We're totally in agreement with that.
Okay, great.
Mr. Chairman, the wetland consultant's not here today. She's not available this month. But her last letter indicated her satisfaction with the wetland treatment. And in fact, since then, they've also provided some additional quantification of some of the wetland and buffer areas on the plan, which I think are captured in the planning department comments. So, it's actually a little bit step ahead from last time.
Okay, great.
In addition. And then it wasn't sent to the traffic consultant this time around, because there was no new, there was no traffic analysis for SEAKER that was needed yet satisfactory the last time around, but the consultants here.
Yeah, I was going to ask if Mark had any follow-up comments from the last meeting?
I wrote that the...
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Now, so I did have a review letter dated December 9th. It wasn't circulated, as mentioned, by Eric, the recent submission. So, my comments really relate to site plan related things, and they're relatively minor. They can be handled as, you know, conditions or something like that. But they're just asking for more definition, because some plans show certain things, and they should also be reflected in other plans and some sign and true related comments too.
Okay. Thanks, Mark.
It sounds satisfactory. Go around the board for comments. Anything? Mike?
Yeah, my only question is, I don't really see a lot of screening of the backyards of the six townhomes and the one side, the side yard of the one townhome that are on Inwood Avenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've talked about that. We are agreeable to things like fencing. We talked about supplemental of the under canopy with some more shrubs and evergreen-type trees to kind of buffer it a little bit. It's, you know, it is, you know, and we are maintaining a 25-foot area that we're just not going to touch. You know, that was right from day one. So, I think it's in everybody's best interest to buffer and to screen it, both our residents and neighbors across the street. So, we're more than willing to work with the planning board when it comes to that point to, you know, find a solution that's amenable to everybody.
That sounds good. Yeah, you have six evergreens, six big evergreens there. You can't plant them too close together, but as you suggest, some plantings in between or, and/or fence. I don't know if the neighbors had any. They did have some concerns of...
Yeah, and there's some good-sized trees there, but they're taller. So, the under canopy is very, you know...
Just some scrub there.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think we supplement some plantings there and a fence. I think we can get to a point where, you know, everybody's happy.
All right, that will be a site plan issue.
So, I just had a question. Is that 25-foot buffer, is that on land that is going to be owned by the individual townhome?
I believe so, yes. It'll, well, so, no. Let me put that way. It's, no, because it's part of the common land.
Okay, so there's going to be either an HOA or a condominium here, and they will own and maintain that?
Correct. Correct.
That's a good point. Anything else?
And if not, I'm sure it is, but for some reason it's not. There'll be an easement there. But I believe we pull that right out of the actual lots.
Because the only thing I'm concerned about is, you know, a unit owner saying, "I want a bigger backyard", and just removing all of...
Totally understandable.
Yeah, well, one of the things we may want to consider is like having a fence as part of the approval, you know, at the property line, so it's clear to the new homeowner that that's the end of their, you know, what they can touch, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think initially we were thinking just planting trees, stuff like that. But you're right, because then what's to say a homeowner doesn't decide to dig something up, you know?
And I apologize, I'm looking at the plan. It is actually common area. There is actually a property line, and then there's 25 feet, and then there's a right-of-way line.
Okay.
So, is the fence behind the plantings, or is the plantings behind the fence?
Maybe the plantings behind the fence.
So, from a homeowner's point of view, they'll see a fence, and the plantings will be between the fence and the road.
Yeah. Okay.
That's what I was thinking.
That's what I would think too.
So, that, as Nicole said, that would identify their, the end of their property.
The fence would be to the, you know, solid delineation point between the end of their property and that buffer zone.
And the common.
And then, you know, so I think that'll go a long way to deterring any, you know, weekend warrior out there thinking he's going to put a playground for his kids.
Yep, that'll help. All right. Anything else, Michael?
That's it.
Sharon?
I only had two notes from last month, but it was already discussed about the water issues and the dam permit. Andy's satisfied with that, so I'm good.
Okay, great. Nicole?
My only last question, and we were kind of going around about it, was your phasing. Is it two phases or three phases?
Three phases. The last...
Yeah, I had three.
Yeah, the last that kind of shows, the first phase is going to be the cluster right in the front.
Okay.
That will require, though, work that's going to occur all the way to the clubhouse, because that's where the pump station's going to go. So, there'll be some access road there. There'll be the pump station. The sewer line would be put in all the way there. And then the second phase is the phase to the north, all the way to clubhouse. And the third phase would be the phase to the south.
And then the third phase to the south?
The one to the south, the south.
So, in that loop around.
That eastern thing, that gets kind of cut in half.
First one was to the front, right?
Yeah, first is clustering, pump station.
Do you have any projection of how many years over time that you think that will...
I've done this long enough that it all depends on the economy more than anything. You know, I just, right now, there's a massive housing demand, you know?
It could be quick, yeah, if it stays.
They go fast. You know, I lived through, you know, 2008. I lived through 93. You know, there were all times when, you know, housing, you know, went from, you know, skyrocketing to flat. And then it picks up. You know, typically, you know, something takes a hit for a couple of years, and it picks up. Right now, you know, all things considered, I, there's just too much of a demand. There's just too much of a need for housing. And I think these types of housing where, and we're seeing a lot more of this. You're seeing a lot of apartments, but you're also seeing more of a return to smaller lots, less maintenance, you know? Not everybody wants a three-acre lot that they have to maintain. And also the affordability. So, these are going to be much more affordable than standalone, single-family homes. They got a broader range of appeal. People are looking to try to simplify their lives, you know? So, you know, having those amenities, having those services there is a huge benefit. And it's kind of a unique product in the market right now to some extent. So, I think it's going to be a very high demand. But they still take time to build, you know? That first phase is probably going to take a couple, three years to...
Yeah, a lot of infrastructure.
Even on a good time.
Utilities and stuff.
Yeah, they're not small phases. They're, you know, the first phase is 1, 2, 8, 12, 24, 24 homes. So, it's a good size, you know, number of homes.
Anything else?
No.
Peter?
I have a question for Mr. Lern, because I want you to put my mind at ease about something. I visited the site three times, once in late winter, once in late spring, and one in early fall. In the late winter and late spring, the drainage under Inwood Avenue was a torrent. And the fall was dry as a bone. So, but obviously, we want to look at this at its peak flow. I really couldn't find where that water was going. I mean, there's a small pond there. I traced it to the pond. Went as far as I could in the site, then went around the site to Hudson Heritage and came up on the west side, hoping that I would find something. There was nothing there. So, I really don't know where that water's going. The pond isn't deep enough really to absorb it, and it's certainly not evaporating. It's not being evaporated. Are we going to have a drainage easement requirement for this site?
I don't know that we need a drainage easement. The town is responsible for the culvert itself. There's an existing drainage channel there.
My concern here is if there is an impediment to that drainage, you have all those houses on Mahar, Barrett, and Inwood that are going to suffer.
Sure, absolutely.
So, I would strongly, if this is going to go forward, that we look at a drainage easement as part of our site plan approval. Otherwise, if there's a problem there, all those people, all those other homeowners are going to be left footing the bill.
Agreed. Yeah, we want to make sure that flows freely, for sure.
The other two items that concern me are there no geotech report, and, you know, there was clearly, there was dumping on the property. There were no test holes dug, as far as I know. And those two things really concern me. I mean, it's up to the applicant. I mean, I think you're rolling the dice by not doing any test borings there, but that's your call. I can't think of any project we've approved that had surface rock that we did not require a geotech report.
That's it.
All right. Thanks, Peter. My two cents is that we've already discussed the additional landscaping on the east side there that we, doing the fence, that'll be good to do. And the other issue is the, I think the county, we're going to take that path into the rail trail so they can get to ShopRite and stuff. And I think the county is starting to require ADA accessibility on those actions. So, do you have any comments right now on the ADA capability of that pathway?
Yeah, I think we're going to, we're going to have to work with the county on it. There are some steeper areas in there, so, you know, there's variances for some of that. You know, you have to do the best you can, you know? So, I think when we get into more... So I think when we get into more final design with that, I'm sure the county will be much more involved in the town. We tried to pick some routes through there that we thought, you know, looked nice, but also had, you know, reduced slopes as much as possible. And some of those can also be, you know, adjusted. I mean, you just don't want to tear the whole site apart. Obviously, it's a nature trail. But I think, I'm very confident we can come up with something that everybody will be happy with and that'll meet the county's requirements.
Okay, good. It is on for public hearing tonight also, so I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anyone on Zoom wish to comment on this application?
The one person who was there is now gone.
Okay. Seeing that, I move we adjourn the public hearing to, when do you think you come back, March?
Well, do we close the public hearing?
No, it should stay open for the site plan and the aquatic research permit.
Oh, for site plan, stay open, sure.
And in the interim, it's got to the town board and also to the zoning board.
Yep, so I move we adjourn the public hearing to March twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. And then we'll move on with other.
I move the planning board determine that the Inwood Avenue Townhouse project would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the seeker negative declaration for a type-one action dated January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Moved in seconded for seeker. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes four to one.
I move the planning board convey a neutral recommendation to the town board regarding a proposed change in zoning designation for Inwood Avenue Townhouses, tax parcel six one six three dash oh three dash two one eight zero one two, located at eighty-one through eighty-nine Inwood Avenue, consisting of approximately thirty-three point six two acres from the residential single-family two-acre R two A district to the residential single-family two-thousand-square-foot R twenty district.
Second.
Moved in seconded for recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
I move the planning board defer further action on this application pending action by the town board on proposed rezoning and direct applicant to respond to writing to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and set of responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to, the following one through thirteen.
Second.
And thirteen includes our comments on the fence and the path tonight.
Also their drainage easement.
And the drainage easement.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, got seeker. Head off to the town board and others to vote. Be back.
Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Have a good night. Any other business to, any other business to be brought before the board tonight?
Peter's puzzled.
No, because there was something, I was, on account of where it was, a project that was, seems to be ground to the hole, but I don't remember what it is.
All right.
Aye, motion that we terminate the next meeting.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
Good night, everyone.
Night, Mark, night, Lisa.
Take care.
Night, John Boy.
Carl, I have a question.